Good evening.
Hello. Somebody came in the theater, he's like, you know.
I think I know who it is.
Jesus.
Takes a whole year. So I said, you're gonna do it again. I said, I'll wait two years and see if I can.
Nice. Nice and short. And it got even shorter. Something came off after the initial.
Oh, Millie, I need you on the first. I actually put it on property court.
Well, I'll reach out.
That's full of snow on mine. It's just a light. That's not it. That's the one I wanna see.
No, that's. Well, I wondered.
I went to look out real fast and you got down there quick.
The office was open.
Uh huh.
And his, and his office was dark, so I just left it on his desk. Eve must be here somewhere. That's too funny.
Walk in that door. Email? And I wouldn't pass enough.
That's funny. Anybody wanna life saver?
Truth, if you don't mind.
Oh, not a problem.
All right, thank you.
Sounds like crazy weather.
Is Matt not here again? Matt's not here again?
No.
Does he have another job?
He's a nurse.
I know he works, but you know, what time he works or what?
Well, I don't know exactly what he does. I mean, if he's.
She had, she started, I think, at eight and four. She never missed in all those years.
Oh, man.
She reminds me.
You had mentioned at one point about.
November sixth. What is going on here?
Just wanna go quick. The only issue is the budget. They don't have to go through ratings.
Oh. That budget was a lot to try to look at and understand. I had to leave that meeting early to get to a something else, an academic booster's meeting at the high school.
Oh, my gosh. This budget has its own battery. We started earlier in September. Second. And had meetings, the old council. And it's like, we were at line for line. I knew about what you all leaked today, but she's.
Oh. I guess there were people waiting to get in, to get the twenty-five dollar gift card or something for the first time.
Did you get your five dollar off? Did you get one of those?
I think I did. I need to get there. I was thirty-five years ago. We're not gonna talk about that, okay? Well, the one I was. Cars or anything. I'm sure. Your guard of some sort. Kinda just. Had them. Their defensive arms.
Yeah.
I don't think they had bags or had any boxes. That's the only time I think I've ever been in one.
Dance. Scout. Just keep waiting.
Yeah. Right now, fingers crossed. Get up to the doctor Monday. His blood is too thin.
Call the meeting in order. If everyone could please stand for the pledge allegiance in a moment. Sign reflection, please.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Councilman Eads?
Here.
Councilman McDaniel's?
I guess I had three more times. Here.
Councilman Hayes?
Present.
Councilman Hitt?
Here.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Here.
Councilman Stahl?
Present.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Here.
Everybody get a chance to take a look at the minutes from October sixteenth meeting. Any corrections or concerns? Hearing in all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. No public hearings tonight. No communications or announcements onto audience concerns. We have Raymond Anthony. Please state your name and address for the record, please. Anthony. Raymond. Raymond.
Okay, once again, my name is Raymond Anthony. I live at five two one Eaton Street. And I was looking under ordinance one eighty-eight dash twenty-five, which is gonna be discussed tonight. And so I went into it further and under section two, there's a list of things such as police department, recreation, mayor, auditor, city council, treasurer, law director and safety service director. And under each one, there's three line items. Uh, one is total, which I don't really care about. Operations, I don't really care about that because that's probably the daily operations of that department. I think I know what personal services mean, but can someone tell me what exactly that pertains to? Okay, that's what I thought it meant. All right, thank you. Yeah, I don't think the mic was on.
Anybody else wanna speak out here? I know you brought the sign up sheet late. Okay. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Cooper Hudson Love, three eighty-one Lena Lane. I had an idea. Since election just passed and everything, and I put this out on Facebook too, to see what people would think. Uh, for the most part, everybody agreed on it. To have some kind of town, town hall event thing to where all, you know, citizens who'd wanna participate could meet their councilmen, mayor, auditor, et cetera, and have, you know, be able to take questions. I know this is, you know, your best thing to it. But it's more your formal thing. Not a lot of people know they can go to council and, you know, just come up here and speak to councilmen and elected officials. But I think it'd be good to have that informal event. And trying to get a lot of people to come to it and just be able to conversate with their officials, councilmen, everybody, and then be able to like take questions, update some things, I guess. But it's all I had. I wanted to see if they, you guys kind of agreed on that, what you, uh, your thoughts would be, so.
Well, I think it'd be a good idea. We could set up around the room and people could just walk up, talk to whoever they wanted to and ask general questions and if there's things they wanna bring up to come to council later, they could always do that. I think it'd be, yeah, I think it'd be a good idea.
Yeah. All right, well.
I think it's a good idea.
It'd be a good idea too. Someone on Facebook suggested that maybe we do it closer to an election.
Yeah.
When there are more issues that are, yeah, but.
Well, I, idea popped to my head here, you know, in just the last forty-eight hours, so.
Hey, we're starting early for the next.
Oh, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Either way, I think it would, it would be a good idea.
Yeah. So, yep, that'd be it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Onto committee reports. Greg?
The personnel budget and finance committee met on October twentieth. Uh, revenue, we'll just do for the year, the revenue for the year is nineteen million eight hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and some change of which of almost four point two million dollars of that's in bond money. So if we take that out, the actual number is fifteen million six hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars. The expenses were fourteen million seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand five, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and some change. Overall, if we just include that fifteen million in the fourteen, those, those two numbers, we're about five percent over. And, and I bring that up because our budget that we're gonna look at later actually has an overall increase of six point nine percent overall that's proposed. So, you know, we're not, we're not gonna be able to tread water next year. It doesn't look like if this has had its current number. So that's just something to discuss later. Just wanted you to be aware of that. Um, there has been some discussions about elected officials and their pay. This will have to be put in place before the next election cycle happens. That includes council members, and I think that I would like to do something that's gonna maybe something along the lines of job descriptions and or you know, ask each elected official, you know, what do you do? What do you, what is it you do? What is it you think you should do? Is your pay appropriate? You know, has your, have your responsibilities increased or decreased? And I think we have to look at all of those things before we can really move forward, but that's just in the discussion stages right now. Uh, so we discussed the budget, which is gonna be before us tonight for the first reading. And then we've moved our meeting a little bit, so it's gonna be the tenth, which is next Monday at five thirty next door in the conference room. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Brett?
Yep. We also moved public service and safety to the eighteenth. Public service at five and safety at six.
All right, thank you. Rich?
Uh, safety meeting, like Mr. McDaniel said, eleven eighteen at six P M.
Andy?
I have nothing additional.
Shannon?
Got nothing?
John? Lisa? Onto city official reports?
All right. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. October was a busy but fun month, um, from all the trunk or treats we had to trick or treat, which actually turned out to be a pretty nice evening. Even though it rained during the day. I do wanna thank all the organizers of the trunk or treats. There were so many and so many people out. Just appreciate them doing those events and bringing that out for the kids. Um, Pumpkin Palooza was a great event. Hopefully you guys were able to stop down at Cowling Park and check that out. The Parks and Rec Department, along with the executive assistant Breedlove, did a fantastic job putting that together. There were so many kids down there and just everybody really enjoying themselves. Um, booze and brews was a huge success for the downtown. I stopped down there and there were a lot of people. They started at Mad Cow and you couldn't walk through that place before they really got out and dispersed and started walking around. Um, they made their way around downtown, checking out all the stores, just enjoying the Dora. Um, I did speak to some local businesses and they were happy with the event and how many people that it brought into their small business. People saying, I'd never been down here before. I'd never been in your shop before. So a lot of great things came out of that. So I wanna thank the eighteen eleven downtown group for hosting that event. Um, also wanna thank them for their volunteer cleanup days. If you guys haven't noticed, they've been getting out and doing that every few weeks and cleaning up and getting the leaves up and just helping out the downtown businesses. So it's looked so nice down there lately. Today I attended the Aldi grand opening. That was a great event. I don't know if you saw the pictures, but when I showed up, hundreds of people in line just to get into Aldi to check it out. So it just fantastic. It's a beautiful store. Please make sure to go out and check that out. And I just wanna welcome Aldi to London and look forward to their partnership. As you may have seen, the sidewalk scanning has begun and those, those guys are out on their little scooters around town, mapping everything and scanning the sidewalks. So I do look forward to continuing that conversation with city council, especially after we start receiving the data and figure out how we're gonna move forward. We did have our farm bid opening for the city farm, which is near Mary Mac Park, and Murray Farms won that bid. We look forward to continuing to work with them. They actually have the bid currently. And they have been fantastic, really taking care of our land and making it better than when they got there. So I'm excited to work with them. The new police department continues to be erected. They have just been moving right along and staying on schedule. The majority of the brickwork is complete and I wrote this and said the wall should be going up soon, but if you guys drove by today, the walls are going up today. So we hope to have that under roof by winter so we can start the interior work and really get that completed. I have been in contact with One Columbus and we are continuing to work on filling the vacated Honeywell Building. We did have some interest. We had, had some people coming in and, and looking at London in different areas, but we're continuing to work on that 'cause we really need to get that building filled, and that is a top priority for this administration. And so I've been in contact with One Columbus and talking about who they're sending it out to, who we need to talk to, what we need to do. So it's a great space and it's a big, wide open space and a lot of different things can go in there. So it's high on their list too. So hopefully we can get that taken care of soon and get somebody in there. Um, Tuesday is Veterans Day, which honors the brave heroes and who have served our glorious country. You guys understand that these men and women, they exemplify dedication, sacrifice, and most of all courage. It's not just a day to reflect on the, on the past, but to recognize the loyalty and service of those individuals that embody it on a daily basis. So I do wanna take a moment and thank all the veterans. Um, I know there's a couple of events going on around town for that day. Now I'll move on to the fun fact, which is number four oh nine. That is a total number of points the undefeated London Red Raider Varsity Football Team has scored in their ten games so far this season in the regular season, while only giving up fifty-three points. That is an average score of forty-one to five. So it almost looks like they've been playing the Bengals defense every year, but, or every game putting up forty-one points, but they will play in their first playoff game tomorrow after they received a bye for being the number one seed. They'll be playing Cincinnati Archbishop McNichols at home starting at seven P M. So I hope we can pack the stands and cheer on the Red Raiders as they start their playoff run in this regional quarterfinal. And that is all I have. I, I believe Mr. Saltzman has a few things also.
Uh, so one, I actually got an email from City Logics today. I don't think I passed that to you in time. They are complete with fifty-seven miles of sidewalk data collected. The, the, or the deliverables that will be coming in the next seventy days. They'll be putting together a sidewalk condition index. Uh, they'll provide a video that shows every, the areas they went through and also the specific issues on the location distresses. We'll receive a, a mapping of those location distresses. And again, they said that'll be in about the next seventy days for the deliverables on that. Ken and I and, and have been working with a couple other vendors and Eve on the cybersecurity. So I know I've talked to a couple of you on the requirements under House Bill ninety-six. We continue to work on that. There will be some changes uh, that come up and, and some legislation that will have to be put in place. Heading into the first of the year and some requirements that are required under state law. So we continue to work on that and some of the changes. Uh, and then today, uh, I was invited by the, uh, the County Ministerial Society or Association, I should say, um, to attend a meeting to address the local homelessness issue. Um, there were a number from the Ministerial Association, other stakeholders in the county and both private individuals, uh, the, the Health Department and others, obviously the city, we were represented. Um, and it was their second meeting and looking for different ways, whether it be local housing for emergency and long term to address some of the homeless issue. Uh, I will say, I know we've had a number of issues related to homelessness in on, on the streets, sitting on the park benches, sleeping there, um, talking with some of the people from Rails to Trails. They've had some issues out there. Um, so they're coming together really to look for both short term, especially with the cold weather coming, warming shelters in places like that and long term solutions. Um, there were a number of discussion today of other places. Other counties and other cities, how they deal with it and try to get ideas to address those issues. So they asked me and obviously I was glad to speak about it tonight, but I think as it moves on, you'll probably have some representation come to do a presentation or a discussion at council in the future.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Onto old business. Up for eighth reading, resolution one fifty-nine dash twenty-five. Can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one fifty-nine dash twenty-five, sponsored by Brent McDaniel's, a resolution to abolish the City of London recycling program.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table this indefinitely until we figure out what we're gonna do with with the problems we have there, 'cause this is just one of many.
I, I anticipate having a report ready to go to the service committee on, is that the eighteenth? The next meeting with the, uh, the best costs. I got some, some additional information yesterday in the day. Uh, we should be able to have some comparables on what we think those costs will be as we move in the future. So we should be able to address that on, at the next service committee. Is there a second on the table?
A second.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution one fifty-nine dash twenty-five has been tabled. Onto new business, ordinance one eighty-eight dash twenty-five. Can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance one eighty-eight dash twenty-five, sponsored by Greg Eads, an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of London, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so council members, if you look at the legislation which was pointed out by Mr. Anthony, um, it's not gonna be the same as the really in-depth report that the auditor sent. So I'm gonna encourage everybody to look at the in-depth report because that breaks it down more line by line than what this does. I would not suggest that we move forward with this tonight because I wanna make sure everybody has a chance to look at that and come back with some very specific questions that they might wanna ask. There might be, wanna be some changes that, that we may want to consider. Um, I'm gonna run a couple of things by you and then I'm gonna ask the auditor to, to give a, more of an overview than what I am. Um, overall, looks like there's gonna be a six point nine percent increase salaries. Um, that's all negotiated. So salaries are gonna go up by four percent next year. Health insurance increase is six percent. Uh, they got that number back before our last meeting. So that's, those are the two big items that are gonna happen. Uh, the police department, the funding for that's a new item for us. That's two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, I believe, for the year. Um, the, the Fourth Street project by the courthouse, I believe we're gonna be responsible for ninety-three thousand. That may be two years before the work gets done, but we're, we're putting that in the budget. There's some, um, some things that I questioned that I'm just gonna bring up now and it's just for consideration for later. Uh, the professional services under the auditor, we've increased that because of hiring the firm to do H R. That was a fifty-one thousand dollar increase. There's also some other money in there that I didn't really realize what those numbers were. Um, A D P, we pay eleven thousand dollars. Um, I think I, I, I'll have her answer that in a minute 'cause I didn't write down a specific note. Payroll services are seventy-five thousand. And then there's an additional nine thousand, I believe, that's been included for, uh, possibly to use for recruiting um, of, for new employees or for open positions in the city. I'll have her explain that a little further in a minute. The events line is a brand new line. They're asking for forty thousand dollars to fund the events that currently go on in the city with, I believe, an increase. Uh, one of the big items within that forty thousand, I believe, is they want to buy some type of temporary stage that can be put up and used at these events. The sanitation line, it very specifically on its own, I think we've got an increase of about two hundred thousand dollars for the transfers. Uh, that is us, our trash being transferred to another facility. Uh, we had to increase that number this year. This is an increase for next year also, just to show that. And then the truck lease that we currently have is a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, I believe, for the lease on the truck. So those are all items of, of interest to me, but I think if you look through that, you're gonna have more items of interest to each of you. Now, Ms. Auditor?
Um, let me pull the detailed expense report for the professional services and that general government line, so I have more detailed information on what is all paid out of there typically. Um, I do know for next year's budget, I put all of the H R and payroll expenses for A D P Clemens Nelson in the auditor's professional services line, I believe, is what it's under.
Remember which line that is? Here it is. Um, it, just your note beside that said, H R fifty-one thousand, A D P benefits, eleven thousand.
Yeah, so.
Payroll seventy-five.
A D P benefits is the platform we're going to be using for open enrollment in our insurance elections. This is the platform that, um, we used to use ease and it was not compatible with the timing of the payroll processing and such. And so that's why that's there. Payroll seventy-five thousand, that's been in contract for years with A D P. And then the A D P recruiting is a new feature that I'm hoping to move toward. That's where uh, potential candidates for job postings can apply directly online. And they would essentially start a profile through A D P and then the department heads would get the data and information and have that already housed there. So they essentially start a profile. It can push through drug test requirements, background check requirements and all of that, just to, I think, ease the process and have it all located in one, one platform.
Thank you for that.
Welcome.
I didn't remember that.
Yeah.
What other, what other, I mean, we had, you know, kind of an extensive conversation the other day.
Yeah, essentially we went through line by line. I do know there were concerns with the event line. Um, everything else is essentially detailed or I tried to put a note out to the side on why the increase is there. So if you have any other direct questions, you were correct on the ODOT project. Um, sanitation, that increase raises health insurance. Everything you shared was correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions for the auditor? I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it. Uh, but if you have any other questions for the auditor tonight, she can either answer those or research those for the next meeting.
Yeah, anybody can email me or if you have any further questions, details, I can pull whatever data you may want to inquire about.
Can I get, meeting is Monday, finance meeting?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, the next meeting will be next Monday, ten, the tenth, yeah.
If I could interrupt on that real quick, I know the timing's kind of different 'cause we've had meetings typically late in the month and now this one's two or three weeks later. I don't have anything for the agenda. If you guys want to still meet to discuss anything, I'm open to it, but I didn't know if maybe you guys wanted to consider pushing it back a week or two to see if anything comes up or that would need addressed, but I currently do not have anything new to add to the agenda.
Well, that's, that's a, that's a good thing to know. I know one of our members said she can't be there, so it's be kinda convenient if we did. However, I mean, when we considered that, we kind of considered that if we pushed it back to the. However, I mean, when we considered that, we kind of considered that if we pushed it back to the 24th, that was going to be Thanksgiving week. And I didn't have a big problem with that, but it was just going to be in that week.
The Thanksgiving week?
Yeah, if we moved it back two weeks. I know that we're trying to not trying to not trying to push this through on a Monday for council meeting on Thursday because the law director has to have time to to get all of this out and there's, you know, it's a short timeline for them.
Yeah, and we currently, we don't have anything. I don't I don't know if anything will come up between now and then. That's up to you guys or we could potentially schedule it after safety and service.
Which that's going to be the 18th, so this would be the next Monday.
It still wouldn't qualify to get anything to count at the next meeting, but even at the 24th, we're looking at the first week of December, which would be the same timeframe.
Right, right. Well, I'm really not opposed to that if you don't have anything on the agenda.
Yeah, I have nothing.
And?
You're talking about the 24th?
The 24th instead of the 10th? The other two members of this committee, would you prefer to move that back if we don't have anything on the agenda right now?
Well, I mean, if we don't have anything on the agenda, we're not going to have much to talk about.
That's true.
What about the 18th after the other two?
There may be something that comes out of those committees. Yeah.
Either one of those would work for me. 18th would be more convenient.
Well, it would be because you're already there, but.
I can't say the Monday, the 24th may be problematic. I've I've committed to play for Sounds of the Seasons auditions.
I think for this month, I I would prefer almost the 18th. I think we're getting close to holidays and and stuff. I think it might be convenient for citizens as well as you guys to get it all done in one night before the holidays.
Well, my personal opinion is I like to not have them on the same night because things come from those meetings that we may or may not have documentation for when it comes to our meeting and I like to be able to have that. However, I'm not going to object if everybody wants to move it to the 18th. If you're best with that, then we can move that to the 18th.
So those other meetings start at?
Five and six.
Five and six.
So ours would be at 6:30 again?
Whenever safety's done, I guess, 6:30 or 7:00?
We can announce at 6:30 and if if safety runs later, we'll just start, you know, a few minutes after that.
Okay, that works.
Thank you for this, the suggestion, since we're not going to have anything on the agenda right now.
Yeah.
Other other than your reconciliation report, I'll gladly not give it to you until the 18th.
Okay, fine.
No, that's fine.
It only took us a day and a half to balance. It's okay.
Okay, so hearing hearing that, I don't know that we need a motion, but we can, we'll move that meeting from the 10th to the 18th.
Thank you.
Okay, on to roundtable. Lisa?
I have nothing.
John?
I just also want to wish the Red Raiders good luck coming playoff. Hope we do as well as last year, meet Watterson again. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Shannon?
As I just mentioned, auditions, if you're interested in performing for the annual Sounds of the Season concert program that is put on by the Madison County Arts Council, I believe that is. The performance is usually is Sunday, I think it's 20. I know it would be the 14th of December. Those auditions are the Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving, usually six to seven at the Brennan Loft, which is above Wilson Printing. I hope everyone is having fun with their Thanksgiving preparations and Old Fashioned Christmas is scheduled for November 30th from 2:00 to 7:00. We will be having a Santa and Mrs. Claus, all the shops will be open again and a tree lighting ceremony once the sun goes down. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. Randy?
The Service Committee meeting is the 18th at 5:00. I'd like to thank everyone that supported me during the election and look forward to serving the next couple of years for City of London.
Rich?
Safety meeting is November 18th at 6:00 PM. Want to thank all of our city employees for jobs well done. Veterans Day is next Tuesday. If you know a veteran or if you don't know a veteran, you see one, walk up and thank them for what they did. I had an occasion to buy a veterans dinner last night for a gentleman over in Grove City. I actually cried after I got in the car. I won't go into details, but it was an honor. Tomorrow night, London High School Football. Pack the stands, be there, be loud, be proud. Ready FM will have it on the world wide web if you can't make it. I'd like to thank everyone who voted for me and I want to thank everybody who just went out and voted, period. That's a right that you have and the fact that you went out and did it, that's that's great. And I just ask the Lord to watch over our city, keep us all safe and keep us all well. And God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and all the votes and people who supported me during the election. Totally on me, I didn't come up a little short. I've been kind of busy, but unlike some people, I I believe in term limits. I was just hoping to get more than one. But, you know, we really don't have to look much further than London, Ohio to see that the world would be a much better place with more unemployed politicians, right? That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Greg?
Well, I'll be glad to hear the conversation about the the trash service and what you're coming up with. I had a couple of questions I was going to ask tonight, but it got tabled so quickly, I didn't get a chance. So I'll just bring these up just for future conversation. I wanted to know how the new truck is working. Do we have the staffing in place that we can run that? You know, I I made a post trying to defend them a little bit, just saying that, you know, things come up, but I'm a little, you know, I was really happy then when we got the new truck that the recyclables were being picked up or at least appeared they were being picked up on a more regular basis. And it just seems like lately there's been a few people asking, why isn't that being picked up? So I'll be happy to hear those answers here in a couple of weeks. I was also very happy to see that the comprehensive plan has taken another step forward and that there's a survey for the community. This is my suggestion, now do it publicly. Posting that on Facebook is still not the appropriate place to do that. It's a it's a good place to do it, but it's not the only place that we should do that. And I really think that if we're going to have this and we're going to ask for people to participate, it needs to be on the front page of the website. It needs to have a banner. You have to know that it's there because people don't think that they have to go click and look for something under the comprehensive plan button that's on there. So this needs to be, as Rich said, loud and proud. It's got to be out there. This is the survey. We want your final input. I haven't taken it myself. I thought I was going to today and then got a little bit busy, but I I will, I want to. Probably this evening because I wouldn't have extra time tonight compared to what we normally have. I did have someone ask me, you know, who's really responsible for the survey and where's the information going? Because it seemed like there was a requirement to put a name in. Again, I haven't taken it. And then they mentioned that it was incognito was like the website or whatever that's running that. And, you know, is is that something that the city controls, something that OHM did or or what? I do have a question if if the administration would like to answer that here in a minute. And then also the sidewalk assessment. So I was really glad that that has finally taken place. I stopped a gentleman. The gentleman doing the assessment was in my neighborhood at 8:55 this morning and I was able to to talk to him for about 10 minutes and just ask, you know, some general questions. How's it going and, you know, how's this process working? And he said today was going to be the last day, he thought, because they were just going to go back and check some trouble areas or areas they wanted to take a second look at. I'm actually thrilled to hear it's only 57 miles of sidewalks because we budgeted for 150 at someone's suggestion. So hopefully we're going to get money back on this and it won't cost them what we thought it was going to cost. So if if I could see if I can have the administration answer about the comprehensive plan, I'd be happy to hear those answers.
This is the final step for the comprehensive plan is the community outreach and and then it's being done and then we send the information to OHM.
Okay, can can we get that like on the front page of the city website and make that a banner and make it more pronounced, do you think? Or at least a link to it?
Yeah, I I have not seen where the link is. I have not looked at the website today, so I'll look into that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
I'll answer the other question you want. So the truck is doing well. There have been some issues with the other trucks being down. We did employ another person, which is helping a ton in terms of getting out there and getting stuff done. But there's still been some issues when there's a a truck down in terms of getting getting regular pickup. So I think the new person finished his training this week. This is first week, right? Yeah, so it we should be up to full staff next week and not pulling from the street department. So we should get a good idea what it's going to look like. So that part is done.
Okay.
Was that your, that was two questions, right?
Yeah, yeah, I was just wondering if the truck was, how the truck was working and what the staffing's like. And, you know, I'm assuming from what you just said, when you're short on staff or maybe a truck's down, it makes it hard. And I don't think people understand that. I think there was a misconception that the recycling program's already stopped and it hasn't.
That's correct.
But if I'm if I'm correct, or you can answer this and correct me, but, you know, if you're short on staff or you're down a truck, you may not always be able to do that and you have to put it in the same truck.
They've they've also been given direction as of late last week, if that occurs or notify myself or the mayor, and we will get that put out on the website and use the Facebook page on the city website saying that they'll be collected together. So there's information shared about the whats and whys.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to say, one of the probably the most disappointing thing about the the loss is the fact that I won't be able to work with Mr. Saltzman on things because I think he's scared of these things. And I was really looking forward to working with him on maybe trying to get us a new fire station because it's really needed. Yeah, that's about all I got. Get out of the next three meetings without having a Pinocchio on who's photoshopped on my face. I guess it'd be a success, I'll call it. Thank you.
Thank you. Like to thank everyone coming out tonight. I don't know if you guys follow, I don't know, high school much, but this fall, there's been quite a few accomplishments. The girls' golf team, they got their first league championship for for their school, school history. The girls' volleyball, they were district champs and regional runner-ups. As Pat has mentioned, John has mentioned, the football team, fifth straight year for league champs, third consecutive undefeated regular season. This season, not a single point scored on them in conference play. I want to wish them good luck in the playoffs. The London Band, they received a superior rating at their their outing.
State contest?
Their state contest. And even the London FFA, I believe they got like the three star honors at their national convention. So these young kids have bright futures, it looks like.
They do.
So.
Do you know what the winning streak's at now? Is it like 34, 35 games?
33.
33.
33 regular season games.
Hey, I'd like to add about the cross-country team too.
Oh, yeah.
They both, the boys' team and the girls' team made it to the regionals and the girls' team hasn't been there in over 10 years. We had one runner, Cameron Karn, made it to the state and I believe he was 68th in the state at that event.
So I'd like to congratulate.
Doing great.
Josh, can I have one more thing?
Yep.
So I I was sent a message, asked to pass on for the Madison County, I had it, it's at the Veterans. Madison County area really, the association is putting on a Veterans Day lunch this Tuesday, the 11th, from 11:00 to 2:00. And it says that veterans and their spouses are asked to join us for a hearty lunch and fellowships. We say thank you to all you have done. Free food is catered by Eminem Diner and it's here at City Hall again, November 11th, this Tuesday from 11:00 to 2:00.
Not forget a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
It was at the finance meeting. I guess I don't know how to turn my thing off. Yeah, and they may have emailed that to us as well. This is the one I got at the meeting. John did not get this budget printed out. Yeah, she.